Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on City Council. I want to call a meeting to order in accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's Declaration of a State of Emergency due to the novel coronavirus Executive Order 51 on March 12, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council and due to the coronavirus pandemic which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This so-called meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the eighth day of June 2021 without a quorum present in the City Council chamber in order to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus in accordance with City Council Ordinance 2020-21 and 2020-102. Each council member is participating from their home or other remote location, and I am in the City Council chamber. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Present.
Mr. Battle is... Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mr. Woodard?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
And is Mr. Battle present?
Not yet, sir.
Okay. We'll hold off just for a moment in anticipating of... in anticipation of his arrival.
Something's going on. I just talked to him. He said he can't get in.
Yeah, we've been having some technical issues, so hopefully he can get in soon.
If it's okay with everyone, we'll go ahead and proceed with the items from our city manager. Certainly, we can bring Mr. Battle up to speed when he gets in. So with that, Ms. Jones?
Okay. Okay, the item I have, Mr. Daniel Jones, the Chief Information Officer, will provide an all-inclusive review of broadband. He will also outline the strategic initiatives started in support of advancing the connectivity for municipal operations and the citizens of Portsmouth. Mr. Jones?
So the project status, the underground conduit is 99.92% complete. The installation of that fiber within the conduit is about 46% complete. We are still on schedule for the completion of the entire ring in the fall of this calendar year. And then upon completion, we would like to schedule a, what we refer to as a technology ribbon cutting. When the network is completed, we can do a marketing event, actually have the network then lit up and go forth from there. Next slide. So the Regional Broadband Steering Committee was founded in 2018 by the regional municipal partners, and this was in furtherance of what the cable landings made an impact that are coming into our sister city, Virginia Beach. So as the cities began to look at how to capitalize on the asset, that's when the Regional Broadband Steering Committee was formed. So with that Regional Broadband Steering Committee, the committee put forth and completed 30% design and architectural of the regional fiber. So with this committee, we outlined 30% plans of what a southside network would look like that traversed all five cities, and then the plans of how it would cross to the peninsula and then go forth throughout western tidewater, effectively connecting all 17 localities of Hampton Roads. Next slide. So this is a picture here of all the transoceanic cable landings, both the Atlantic and the Pacific, that come into either South America or North America. And then what we really want to highlight on, if you'll go to the next slide, this is the transatlantic cable landings. So as you can see, there is a vast majority either coming into the New York Harbor area or coming into the southern Florida area. But what you can see there is there is two cables that are currently depicted in this, but there are many more that have landed or about to in the process. But the key to that is you can see that Virginia Beach is going to be the middle ground because both the north and the south landing point, you can see, it's very compact as far as available real estate to bring a cable and/or infrastructure in. Next slide. So the Southside Network Authority came from the Regional Broadband Steering Committee. So the Regional Broadband Steering Committee was basically transformed into the Southside Network Authority. That resolution was adopted back in 2019, and the adopting cities was, of course, Portsmouth Suffolk, Norfolk, Chesapeake, and Virginia Beach. The authority board members for this, it varies from variations of council, executive members of city government, or technical representatives. Since the formation in 2019, the authority has hired an executive director. We have advanced the 30% plans that were completed by the Regional Steering Committee to a 70% design mark, and both a Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act, or PPEA, and a Public Private Partnership, RFP, have been released for a parallel regional construction schedule to see what the entirety of the network would look like from a construction point of view or from a vendor to actually construct it. Next slide. So the Portsmouth Broadband Authority, here are some attributes, both a pro and a con of the advantages of a broadband authority versus a non-authority. So as you can see, with a broadband authority, a municipal government can provide internet service beyond their facilities. And beyond facilities, I mean beyond an actual brick-and-mortar structure. So that would include parks, festivals, strategic development corridors, the government can protect the trade secrets, can enter into public-private partnerships, can incur debt attributed to the local body, just like any other authority. They can close unserved or underserved connectivity gaps, and there can be a strategic focus from the authority's standpoint on broadband throughout the city. Some of the disadvantages of not having an authority is the status quo remains the same. We're dependent upon an internet service provider at a particular cost, without any cost savings. We have no protection. The city can only lease dark fiber. That's the extent they can do. They cannot provide any service outside of their facilities, and they can't partner with any private entities. Next slide. So the Portsmouth Broadband Authority was adopted in September 2020. The authority board members, the City Council was initially appointed as the board, and through this authority, I'm sorry, through this authority, this fall, when the state released their CARES grant, the city was able to capture $750,000 to deploy wireless to our housing authority and municipal facilities to further facilitate connection for our unserved and underserved populations. Next slide. So here is our authority Wi-Fi deployment. As part of the deployment of the Wi-Fi to our housing authority, these are the sites that was identified that we initially or have either completed or are in the process of almost being complete, a free Wi-Fi throughout the neighborhood. Next slide. So this is a depiction of Dale Homes. As you can see here, and I know it may be hard to view, but the color scheme that you show, as it goes green, that means you're sitting right on top of what we refer to as an access point that actually distributes the signal. But as you can see, it pretty much blankets the entire complex in some way or another as it goes forth with the backbone connecting to our municipal ring. Next slide. And then this is Swanson Homes, where there's 12 access points, and as you can see, we designed it so that it would blanket the majority of that campus. Next slide. And this is Phoebus Square, I believe is what it's referred to. That was a smaller campus, so that was just two actual APs, and you can see that it blankets that as well. Next slide. This shows the Hamilton Place deployment, that it goes through and shows exactly where the APs are installed, the seven APs that we have identified, and that how it goes through each one of the different streets, because that is a, with Dale Homes, that is probably, if I'm not mistaken, don't quote me, but one of the larger geographic campuses of the housing authority. Next slide. And then this is the Hope Village, where there is just one master AP, and then there's two that feeds off of that one singular to blanket that coverage area of those three buildings. Next slide. And then what'd be coming forth, and a representative from the city attorney's office is also connected. There's going to be some third-party internet service providers that will need access to the cities right away through a fiber franchise agreement. We've got some requests, like I said, that'll be coming forward, and then the process of adopting those are nearly identical to other franchises such as the small cell that you've done in the past. The next slide. So the conclusion with the broadband is, as the RFPs or ISBs come back for the Southside Network Authority, we'll keep the executive management, those on the board apprised of those, what's going on with that authority and how we're going to progress forward, and then the next steps for the Portsmouth Broadband Authority that will need to be taken. Next slide. And if you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that presentation. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, do you have any que... you have the floor, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Jones, for the presentation. This has always been an interest for me because I was with the first five people from the member jurisdictions that got this started before we brought all of our experts on board. So glad to see us to this point. But the installation of the fiber that's at 46% complete would be done this fall. Where's the holdup? Are we waiting on additional materials or funding or resources or labor? Just where is the additional holdup with the 46.28% installation? Okay. Okay, thank you. Looking forward to it.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, my question, it may be more for the city attorney. I'm not sure, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones may can address it, is regarding the relationship between the Southside Network Authority and the Portsmouth Broadband Authority.
Mr. Jones or Attorney Stromberg, are either you prepared to address that?
I can.
Mr. Jones, you have the floor, sir.
Okay. So the Southside Network Authority and the Portsmouth Broadband Authority are completely separate entities. One has no bearing on the other, except, well, let me say this, no bearing. The main difference is the Portsmouth Broadband Authority can only serve within the jurisdiction of Portsmouth. It's jurisdictional boundaries. The Southside Network Authority actually encompasses all the south side initially with the second phase going to the peninsula and the third phase going to the western tidewater.
So there's quite a bit of contracts and development that's taking place, so within Portsmouth, that has been directed by the Southside Network Authority?
No. No, the only thing that, let me say this, what is within the Portsmouth boundaries has run through the municipal operations or administrative operations, just as any other contract or vendor or project would. The only thing that the Southside Network Authority has done is progressed the regional plans of what it would look like. There has been no construction, no contracts for construction from the Southside Network Authority perspective.
So who is that?
You.
You can't, it's not enough to say you, I know that, but we have not had any involvement with the project, my knowledge. So I know it's opposed to the council, but who's making these decisions? If there has never been anything right for this Portsmouth Broadband Authority on which council is supposed to be the board?
I can answer that, or?
Mr. Jones, you have the floor, sir.
Okay. The authority serves as the operating arm. The Portsmouth Community Broadband Network is still a municipal function, so the authority has not leased, doesn't own, control, operate any of that network. So that network that you, that we mentioned before, that is in the ground of 55 miles that connects our institutions, is part of municipal operations and not part of the authority?
That's what I need to get some clarification from the city attorney, because if we're one of this authority and all of this work is being done, and I know I have been maybe oppressed of any of this, I would like to hear from Mrs. Stromberg. If not, that this may be some type of update. I don't know whether the council members have been involved in the process, but to say that it is a Portsmouth Broadband Authority and there's quite a bit of development taking place, I'm not clear, I don't know what, how that's being done without the authority being involved.
Thank you, sir. And Madam City Attorney?
Yes.
Could you take note of that and put together briefly what you wanted to present today?
Yes, I just wanted to say that that's one of the reasons why we put this on the agenda before the City Council, to ensure that we get your feedback and start having dialogue about this, because this project has been moving forward, and with the City Council being the members to make the decisions, we want to make sure you have that information so we can definitely put together a report back that talks about where this is and what differentiates how this project moves forward in the future and where it exists now.
Yeah, well, when I look at the presentation, particularly on page 11, where it speaks of public-private partnerships, that's about contracts, and we have been updated or involved in, and in that I don't know if there's any type of public-private relationships that exist now, and so that's what I would like to get updated on this by the city attorney as well. And like I said, if not, probably not tonight, but at a later date.
Yes. Well, it is already scheduled for the next meeting to talk about, to continue this discussion, so we'll make sure included in that meeting, we will address some of these questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My question for Mr. Jones is, what's the timeline when consumers can expect to use the system, and also when do you anticipate revenue being generated from the commercial aspect of it?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Maney. The question as far as consumers being able to use this, as it sits right now, it cannot be used by a consumer, by a citizen, but that is a decision that the authority can make, that is up to the authority.
You know, that goes back to my colleague's question, which I think is a good one. You know, we have authorities, and we pretty much know what their duties, what their charges, and we give reports back from them. We get minutes of their meetings. When the attorney comes back, I would like to see what are marching orders for the authority. I think council needs to be grounded in and have consensus that we agree with us. You know, if they're going to set any rates, we need to be cognizant of that process. We need to know what constitutes action by the authority. Are there voting members, non-voting members, liaison? I know that we have a liaison to the authority, I believe, but it's just a lot of battle as we drive around town, we see the construction aspect, but you know, we approach it now, we're going to start getting questions, just like we're asking here. Is the residents of our city going to see some advantage to the system? Is it going to be all?
So there's quite a bit of contracts and development that's taking place. So within Portsmouth, that has been directed by the Southside Network Authority?
No, no, the only thing that, let me say this, what is within the Portsmouth boundaries has run through the municipal operations or administrative operations, just as any other contract or vendor or project would. The only thing that the Southside Network Authority has done is progressed the regional plans of what it would look like. There has been no construction, no contracts for construction from the Southside Network Authority perspective.
So, who is that?
You.
You can't, it's not enough to say you, I know that, but we have had any involvement with the project, my knowledge. So I know it's supposed to be council, but who's making these decisions? If there has never been anything right for this Portsmouth Broadband Authority on which council is supposed to be the board?
I can answer that, or?
Mr. Jones, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, the authority serves as the operating arm. The Portsmouth Community Broadband Network is still a municipal function. So the authority has not leased, does it own control, operate any of that network? So that network that you, that we mentioned before, that is in the ground of fifty-five miles that connects our institutions is part of municipal operations and not part of the authority.
That's what I need to get some clarification from the city attorney. Because if we're one of this authority and all of his work is being done, and I know I have been made a rest of any of this. I would like to hear from Mrs. Stromberg. If not, at this meeting, some type of update. I don't know whether the council members have been involved in the process, but to say that it is a Portsmouth Broadband Authority and there's quite a bit of development taking place, I'm not clear, they don't know what, how that's being done without the authority being involved.
Thank you, sir. And Madam City Attorney?
Yes.
Could you take note of that and put together a brief report? You wanted to present something today?
Yes, I just wanted to say that that's one of the reasons why we put this on the agenda before the city council to ensure that we get your feedback and start having dialogue about this, because this project has been moving forward. And with the city council being the members to make the decisions, we want to make sure you have that information, so we can definitely put together a report back that talks about where this is and what differentiates how this project moves forward in the future and where it exists now.
Yeah, well, when I look at the presentation, particularly on page eleven, where it speaks of public-private partnerships, that's about contracts. And we haven't been updated or involved in any of that. I don't know if there's any type of public-private relationships that exist now. And so that's what I would like to get updated on this by the city attorney as well. And like I said, if not, probably not tonight, but at the next meeting.
Well, it is already scheduled for the next meeting to talk about, to continue this discussion, so we'll make sure included in that meeting, we will address some of these questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My question for Mr. Jones is, what's the timeline when consumers can expect to use the system? And also, when do you anticipate revenue being generated from the commercial aspect of it?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question as far as consumers being able to use this, as it sits right now, it cannot be used by a consumer, by a citizen. But that is a decision that the authority can make, that is up to the authority.
Well, you know, that goes back to my colleague's question, which I think is a good one. You know, we have authorities, and we pretty much know what their duties, what their charges, and we give reports back from them. We get minutes of their meetings. When the attorney comes back, I would like to see what are marching orders for the authority. I think council needs to be grounded in and have consensus that we agree with. You know, if they go setting rates, we need to be cognizant of that process. We need to know what constitutes action by the authority. Are there voting members, non-voting members, liaison? I know that we have a liaison to the authority, I believe. But it's just a lot of battle, as we drive around town, we see the construction aspect. But, you know, we approach it down, we're going to start getting questions, just like we're asking here. Is the residents of our city going to see some advantage to the system? Is it going to be all commercial? I know that we were told early on that it's going to be a terrific revenue generator. So there's a lot of questions and a lot of answers. Council needs to have. Dr. Whitaker's question, I think, is a good lead-in to the needing to get some answers.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Battle, sir, you have the floor.
I noticed that you said that we could have a public-private partnership with, not that Rudy said that, but we couldn't enter into a partnership with an entity. But most importantly, I want to know the financial aspects of what we're expecting. Now, I'm not talking about the economic implications. I'm talking about the financial aspects of what we can expect to benefit after the completion. And is it mandatory that we have a third party in between us and state direction decides to use our network and have a contract with it? Do we have the ability to deal directly with them, or do we have to put a third party in the middle who will receive possibly more of the benefits financially than we will? Can you please explain that to me?
Yeah, Mayor? Mayor? Attorney Stromberg, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, let me introduce Kelsey Swanger of our office. She's been working on this, she can answer some of these questions. I realize that you want probably more information, but let me refer to her, and she can answer some of these questions right now. Kelsey Swanger of my office.
Mayor Weissmick, members of city council, I think it might help to take a quick step back and talk about some of the organizational structure here. So, right now, as Mr. Jones stated, we have this fiber ring, that's a municipal fiber ring, and owned by the city itself. So right now, the wireless authority, we've set it up, but the wireless authority doesn't have control over the ring at all. It is still wholly a city project. And that was advanced by the city, I don't remember exactly when it started, Mr. Jones would have that information, I think back in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, as a CIP project for the city. So as it stands right now, it's the city's fiber, and the authority has no control. The authority was set up in September of twenty-twenty, so that we could start making that transition to having the authority control some of this fiber, so that we could do some of those things that you can't do as solely city-owned fiber ring, like provide services to end consumers. So while the authority is set up, and city council are the members of the authority, the authority has not had its initial meeting yet, this presentation and the presentation that you'll have at your next city council work session are going to go over some of these basics, so that you're prepared to have that first meeting as a wireless authority. So in order for the wireless authority to have any control over the fiber ring, you as city council will have to grant essentially a lease or some sort of agreement to transfer some of those fiber strands over to the authority to give them control over that. And until you do that, the wireless authority, they don't have anything to contract with, essentially. And I hope that answers some of the questions.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Swanger. And if I may, in the interest of the discussion, I think it's, at this point, we probably need to wait for the next steps, be prepared to discuss this more in depth at the next meeting. We don't necessarily have all the details. The questions have been taken down by the city manager and the attorney, so I believe as we move forward with the next steps, as is stated in the presentation, we will be able to get more answers to the questions on how we need to proceed forward. Dr. Whitaker, you have--
Yes, well, Mr. Mayor, and also in regard to our next meeting to get more information regarding the structure of the organization, the Portsmouth Broadband Authority and responsibilities. Also, because there's been a significant amount of work, seems like there has already been done, would like to know how much has been spent, with whom, and what's the source of those funds?
Duly noted, and we will have that information when we come back with our next steps, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
And also, Mr. Mayor, as far as the network that's being laid, has all of this been on public property, or has there been a mix of public and private property? Just curious about that, as well. And like I said, that's for the next meeting, that have to be addressed tonight.
We'll have all that addressed in the next meeting, sir. Thank you very much. Does that conclude our questions for the broadband update? Thank you once again, Mr. Jones, and we'll move to the next item, which is discussion between council of the process, hiring process, for our city attorney and city assessor. Certainly, the floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
As part of personnel, I would be interested right now in keeping it on an interim basis at this point. For city attorney, for the city assessor, I think we need to assess whether having that permitted at this point on interim, still, where we are in the application process.
Well, sir, I can appreciate that. It is my understanding, just as a point of information, that the application process has closed for the city attorney. And I believe it is still open for the city assessor. I think it's closed for the city assessor as well. So both of those application processes are closed. Now, we need to probably decide, we don't need to probably, we need to decide how we will proceed forward in the process.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. I guess since the process is closed, and we saw a list of names, and we saw some applications for the city attorney, I haven't seen anything for the city assessor, so I guess our personnel committee or we as a council need to call a special meeting to review those and to see if those are some that we would like to choose from, or if they are not, if we want to keep our interims or proceed making our interims are permanent. So I would think that that would be the next steps that we would need to take.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, you have--
I would agree with that, you know, that we have a closed session meeting to discuss each of these positions and the persons who have applied.
Very well, is there a consent? Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I was just saying the same thing. I have no objection to their suggestion based off the application process.
I'm going to concur as well.
So it sounds like we have a consensus. Can we get a show of hands that we move forward with having a closed session to review the applicants for both the city attorney and the city assessor? Do we want to, excuse me, sir? Ms. White, are you on with us? Do we need--
I am, sir.
Do we need to set that schedule now, or is it something that we can do at a later date?
That's at the discretion of council. The city assessor applications were forwarded to you all this morning.
So is it the pleasure of council to set up the review process and discussion in a closed session for next week? Or I know the following week is a council meeting.
Next.
But we probably need, we probably need some time, as we had in the previous review, we probably need at least a couple of hours to discuss the applicants and how we wish to proceed. So just keep that in mind, Dr. Whitaker, sir.
Is next Tuesday at five, is that good for council? Or is that enough time for public notice?
Madam Clerk? Is that enough time for public notice?
Yes, sir, we can get a call letter out for whenever you all want to meet.
Okay, then, is it the consensus of council to set the meeting for next Tuesday at five? Can I shoot a show of hands, please? Madam Clerk, would you please note that the council is pleased to hold the closed session to discuss the city attorney and city assessor for next Tuesday at five P M?
Yes, sir, will do.
Whether it be virtual or in person, what is the preference?
Virtual is fine. Virtual's--
We'll continue on with the virtual discussion, but once again, I would encourage everyone to look over the information, just to be prepared. We have forwarded to us the applicants for the city attorney and the city assessor. So everyone is in receipt of that. If you're not, certainly feel free to contact our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White, and she'll make sure you have it. Thank you. We've now come to item three, which is our city council liaison reports. And we'll start with you, Vice Mayor Barnes.
I don't have any updates.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Battle?
No updates, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Lucas Burke?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I attended the Virginia First Cities annual meeting on last Friday. It was a three-hour meeting, virtually. Very good information that came out of that meeting. They gave us updates regarding the state budget, the A R P funding that we are all concerned about, on how the allocations will be dispersed. Portsmouth received our allocation based on, well, everyone received it based on a population, and of course, the Portsmouth population that they used was ninety-four thousand five eighty-one. And all across the state of Virginia, there's a one-point-nine trillion-dollar A R P allocation. They even gave us some recommendations on how those fundings should be allocated, and I guess we'll get more information about that in one of our meetings. But Jim Regenbaugh, who is the financial fiscal person for Virginia First Cities, gave some in-depth information on the allocations. Also, our schools was allocated funding as well. So Portsmouth City Public Schools received a forty-six million-dollar allocation, and our city received a substantial amount as well. They also talked about the upcoming special session. I know we have some concerns about our charter changes, but there will be a special session in August, that date is not set, but Virginia First Cities will be tracking legislation in regards to the thirteen member jurisdictions of the first cities. So that's the only update I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Moody, sir?
To report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker?
No report.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let everybody know, I attended the Behavioral Health Service Free Community event. They had a lot of information about mental health and other information towards our LGBT community as well. It was very informative to the community. It was a large free event, and our Chambers winner of Portsmouth Mercy Drops was actually there as well. So I think it was an informative event, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And so that concludes our items for this work session. Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, sir. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, sir. Since we had time before we go into a closed session, I would like to, if it's okay with council, to discuss the charter changes that we mentioned regarding the Section 301 non-interference and Section 1209, the recall. So that we can put in motion the necessary steps for making sure if there are going to be any charter changes that is part of the legislative package, and that we're in line with the timeline of what Mr. Stromberg suggested.
Attorney Stromberg? Are you prepared to discuss?
Well, I guess I wanted to see if there's a, if we can reach a consensus, so that we can move forward with scheduling the public hearing, a consensus on Section 3.01, the non-interference section. I thought we had discussed removing the criminal language from that section. And then last week, or our last meeting, we had a discussion about the recall process and adopting the state standard, and there was some discussion as far as involving the citizens and the statute that I thought we should, if it's the consensus of council, have some more discussion on, and since we have time, if that's okay.
Well, is everybody in agreement with having a discussion further on that matter? Please raise your hand.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
So can we see if there's a consensus on taking the language that's in the non-interference section, taking the criminal liability out of that section?
Dr. Whitaker, that was already done. We're moving forward with the non-interference with the notice, that was done last meeting, I believe. So we're on track with that one. You brought up the new possible revision or rescission of 12.09, as far as the recall. I sent out a memo this morning on that. I don't know if you all have had a chance to read it, but--
So, Mr. Stromberg, I'm sorry, before we go to 12.09, so council, is a consensus that that language be changed to having a penalty of a fine, I believe, and reprimand from council?
Right, a hundred dollar, up to a hundred dollar fine, I think was approved last time, and possible censure by council--
Okay.
--to take it at the criminal area. It's purely civil amongst the council members themselves.
Okay.
That's on track, we have to advertise in the newspaper. Ultimately, that will go to delegation, legislative delegation, to carry to the state legislature that has to approve any changes or revisions to the charter. So that's on track, and we just have to get the delegates to do that, and I think the delegates are probably in favor of that one. As far as this 12.09, I don't know, you know, we've just done the memo, there's certainly differences in the recall provisions that are presently in our charter versus-- versus the, uh, removal statute that is in the state code. Um, the removal statute in the state code is, is quasi-criminal because the Commonwealth attorney prosecutes it and it goes before a judge, although you still need to get, uh, a petition filed with the circuit court clerk. The, um, the charter that we presently have.
Well, well, Mr. Stromberg, just when you said quasi-criminal, there's no, uh, criminal liability attached to the state removal statute, is there?
Well, it, uh, I say quasi-criminal because it has some aspects of the criminal law. First of all, the Commonwealth attorney prosecutes it.
Right.
A judge, uh, or a jury, uh, decides whether, uh, the person, the elected officer, uh, was neglectful of his duty or misuse, misused his office or was incompetent. Um, or there's certain convictions of misdemeanors, uh, that will get you removed. Felony is automatic.
But that's, but that's not part of the, that's not part of the pro, you know, the process itself doesn't, uh, have an end result of some type of criminal liability.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. It just, and that's why I use quasi. No, you're right as far as the, the end result, but, uh, the person is removed, uh, but the, the, the way it is similar to criminal is that the Commonwealth attorney, which is the entity that prosecutes crimes, is the one that actually moves forward with this. Uh, so, so that, you know, puts it in the criminal field a little bit, uh, and then you have a trial, basically.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I, I just don't want it to sort of be clouded with criminal liability. I mean, that's no more than, um, a council member wanting a conflict of interest statement coming from a Commonwealth attorney. That, that doesn't mean that there was some type of criminal liability or anything involved. So I just, I didn't want to, to cloud it.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, yeah. But as, but as far as the, as far as twelve point oh nine, um, you mentioned last time about having that section rescinded, and then if we did that, we would follow the state process, which removes a lot of the arbitrariness out of the method that is presently being used.
Yes, the, the, the city charter is more general. Uh, the petition just contains a general statement of the grounds upon which the election of a successor is sought. Um, it's really done by a petition. Uh, the, uh... The circuit court does get involved to make sure the petition is sufficient, uh, but then basically it just goes back to the voters. And, and the voters decide. And, and it's not very specific. Whereas, uh, the state code lists, um, grounds, uh, for, you know, removal of office, such as neglect of duty, misuse of office, incompetence in the performance of duties, uh, when any of those materially affect city council. And also, I mentioned before, convictions of certain, uh, misdemeanors, uh, also are grounds for removal. And so, yeah, it's more, the state law is more specific.
It has, it has some standards in place.
Right. What, what I just mentioned were, were actually listed in the statute.
Right, right. Um, I just want to mention to my colleagues again, um, the whole reason why these charter amendments have been, uh, brought up, because we have seen, uh, the abuse of both of these sections of our charter. Um, we've seen, um, litigation against council members. Um, we've seen, um, people bring up, citizens bring up, um, recall threats without any type of standards. And I, I think if we're going to move in a more progressive way, I think we've already addressed three point oh one. But I think we really need to, um, bring some type of legitimacy and standards to this whole recall process because, uh, we've seen it, uh, abused and, and misused. So just want to remind you of the context out of which, uh, this arose.
Um, 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 Councilmember Battle, you, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. I was under the impression that we were going to, you know, write the changes in and submit them. But now, if we're gonna go to the state's program of dealing with, uh, improprieties of, uh, for us, we need to do a better, 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 or take a longer, longer look at that situation. Uh, because at the onset, I was under the impression that we were going to change the terminology to suit us. But the state seems to have a, a larger scope of indictment possibilities. So all I'm saying is, let's, uh, be careful. Look at the state's situation and maybe we need to, you know, stay where we are into, in the process of, uh, initiating our own terminology and having that accepted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Lucas Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, my, my question, I guess, is along the same line. And I know that we're Dillon Rule State and that each locality has its own set of charter, um, guidelines for which they can follow. But under the recall, are we, uh, obligated to follow the same, um, processes of all municipal governments, uh, as in regards to the recall, uh, section of the charter?
We, we have to, if, if we don't have a charter section that deals with recall, then it automatically goes to the state law. Uh, you could certainly change the language, as Mr. Battle suggested, of the charter. You can revise the charter section to give it maybe more, um, teeth to it or more structure to it. Uh, or if you rescinded that in totality, we would automatically revert to the state code, uh, that spells out when local officers can be removed from office. Uh, the, the charter would prevail if we had, if we keep a charter provision.
I, I, I do have a question, Mr. Stromberg, and then we'll come to you, Dr. Whitaker. Uh, uh, under the state code of Virginia, removal of elected offices, it says upon petition, and then it tells you what it is. But here, here are the, here are the, the things: neglect of duty, misuse of office, or incompetence in the performance of duties. Um, you, you know, I know under our current system is kind of vague, but you could kind of lump a lot of things in incompetence and the performance of duties, um, neglect of duty. Uh, that's not specific either, because, uh, one person's neglect of duty is another person's not neglect of duty. So it's still vague in its interpretation. And I think that as, as to Mr. Battle's point, um, I just need to understand, you know, what is, what would be the benefit of going to the state system or defaulting to the state versus what we currently have in place? At the end of the day, um, I, I, I don't see what the difference is. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Um, in, in, uh, response also to, uh, Mr. Battle, uh, Councilman Battle, I, I believe there may be a middle ground that could be reached that would, um, satisfy what Councilman Battle, because I, he, he brought up a legitimate point last meeting about, uh, the citizens still maintaining a, a voice. And, uh, I think that when, when we look at what you have on the city charter side, um, actually, the language that's in the state code actually narrows. The charter, when you read the charter, it just says that an elective officer of the city may be removed at any time after one year in office. A petition signed by electors equal to thirty percent of the electors who vote. It has no language in there regarding what type of acts or, um, behaviors or statutory violations. There's nothing in there. So actually, what Mr. Battle mentioned as far as the state being broad, actually, the state narrows, and the city really has a very broad interpretation. And that's why we've seen abuse of it. I think the middle ground of it, that, um, if I heard Councilman Battle correct last week, um, the state code says that the judge ends up removing. If there's some way the charter can have it whereby, um, the judge initially finds that there's some merit to the recall by one of these criteria being met, then that would give grounds for there to be a recall election. And therefore, the citizens would have the vote on that. And so I don't know if that's a middle ground that can be reached there, um, where at least there has to be some standard met. And if that standard is met, then the citizens, not the judge, would still have the vote to recall. But it, but I think there should be some standards. The code as written now, um, is, is just too vague and, and broad.
Or the charter, you mean, and, uh?
I mean, the charter, yeah, the charter.
We can, uh, we can work with some language and bring it back. Maybe it takes some of the language that's used in the state code and just put it in the charter provision, as, as I think, uh, Mr. Battle's good.
Yeah, that's, I don't know, is, Mr. Councilman Battle, is that, does that sort of reach a middle ground where you were trying?
That, that, that's exactly where I am. And the essence is to move the subjectiveness in the language.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah.
We'll, uh, draft, uh, you know, redraft the charter provisions or some additional language, and, uh, we'll send it to you during the week. Um, because if, if you do want the changes, we still have time, but, but we, we've got to move, uh, sort of quickly. We have until November to get the, uh, the package to our legislators. And, and as I said, we're, we're moving forward with the, uh, non-interference one, the three point oh one. Would you like for us to go ahead and, and, and try to redraft it and bring it back?
Yes, I'm in agreement.
I, I would like to see a redraft, sure.
Okay, we'd be happy to.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, Mrs., Mrs. Stromberg, is it, is it possible that the public hearing could have both items? So we wouldn't have to have one for one and another one for another?
Well, you know, I think we already had the public hearing on the, uh, on the revision of, of, uh, non-interference. That was done last.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're done with that. We're moving forward with it. And, uh, wait a minute, let me check.
I'm not, I'm not aware that we've done that, sir.
I don't, yeah, I wasn't.
Yeah, I don't know why I thought it was done. If, uh, yeah, we, we've got to give the ten-day notice to have the public hearing. We'll, we'll try to do those together if we can. Uh, we have enough time to do both. We'll get it to the, uh, legislative delegation.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Once again, that, that concludes our discussion in the, in the work session. Seeing no other items, uh, we're adjourned into our regular meeting at seven o'clock.
We have a, uh, Mr. Mayor, I thought we had a closed session for the, we have some boards and commissions.
Sir, we, 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 we do not have a closed session for that, um, on the schedule?
Well, is it, is it, if it's a consensus of council, because, because we are, um, voting on something. Then also, we just came out of our evaluation, and it was, uh, issue that just wanted to discuss in closed session on that, on how we proceed.
Well, we, sir, we don't have a closed session, uh, on the schedule. Um, I know that we are scheduled under boards and commissions to do the approvals and the votes under boards and commissions, but we are not scheduled for a closed session.
So, so council, if council consents to a closed session, is that what you're saying?
We're not scheduled for one, sir.
I know we're not scheduled.
If, if, if council consents to a closed session, we can have one.
Right, so that's all that matters.
If the majority consents because we don't, sir.
Sir, just raise the consent question. We don't have to keep going back and forth over this. It's not a major issue either. They're gonna consent or they're not.
Sir, sir, I understand that, but, but, you know, for everyone's benefit, not just for your benefit, it's other people that have to benefit from the information. That's why I'm trying to explain it, okay? That's, that's my whole purpose. I really, sir, sir.
It's not.
I, 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 sir, sir.
Right.
I have the floor. I, I didn't give you the floor, sir.
Right, go right on.
I didn't give you the floor.
Go right on.
You don't have the floor right now. I do.
Go right on. Go right on, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, we will do now, first of all, we need to have a consensus of four or more to go into close, and then we will get a motion together, sir. That is how the proper order of things need to take place. So do we have a consensus of four or more to go into a closed session?
What is the agenda? I'm sorry.
It's, it's, it's just very simple to go over the board and commissions and also, uh, the evaluation from yesterday. It's no big.
I, it is no big deal. That's correct. But it is the proper order. We have a consensus, and we're preparing, we're preparing now.
Motion.
The language.
I have the language for the motion. It's the same language we always use to go into closed session for boards and commission.
Sir, there's different subsections perhaps that we need to look at. So if you would just...
Same subset. I just want to let, Ms. White, it's the same subsection we always use.
Well, I'm talking to the attorney right now, sir. As I was explaining to you, if you would have let me finish, the attorney has made a comment that we might need to verify the subsections. So we just want to do things in the proper order, if that's okay.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
It's always fine.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Whitaker and Vice Mayor Barnes, do you want me to forward the boards and commissions' information to the rest of council, because they didn't receive it?
I forwarded already.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. I'm sorry.
Uh, colleagues, right, right now, we're checking the other, other information just to verify. And we'll be back momentarily, if you would just be, be patient.
Councilmembers, I have the motion for you. I can read it, and then someone can just motion, and then second. If that helps.
Mm-hmm.
There is a, okay, there is a move to go into closed electronic meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsections two point two dash thirty-seven oh eight point two, eight point three, and two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, eight point one, and city council ordinance twenty twenty dash one oh two for the purpose of discussing and considering appointments to boards and commissions and discussing the performance of city council appointees.
Second.
That would be the motion, and then we need the second.
So move.
Thank you.
And is there a second, your second?
Second.
Yes, sir, we have a second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
You are in?
We're in closed session.
I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia First Cities. only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
We have a second?
Second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We had a close?
You are certified, and you can take a break until seven.
Yes, ma'am. That concludes our meeting until seven. Thank you.